Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wattsburg area school district where we are student centered and future focused for a world-class education. The board work session of July 13th is now called to order. I would ask if there are any attendees wishing to speak during the citizens' comment time, to please use the question and answer feature and submit your name and your address. And then Mrs. Bendig, who's running the Zoom part of the meeting, will recognize you during that guest and citizens' comment. At this time, would you please rise for the pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we have a roll call, please? Madam Secretary.
Mr. Blazer.
President.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Paris.
Here.
Mrs. Pekovic.
Here.
Mrs. Pound. Dr. Mr. Pushcheck.
Here.
Dr. Pushcheck.
Here. Thank you, Madam Secretary. The next item on the agenda is school reports. Mr. Berlin, will there be school reports for next week?
I will have a brief update next week on building level plans.
Thank you very much. There are no guests or citizens that have signed up to address the board this evening, so we will move on with our agenda. And the main portion of our agenda will be the superintendent's report. The chair recognizes superintendent of schools, Mr. Ken Berlin, who will discuss the health and safety, school reentry plan presentation. Mr. Berlin.
Thanks, Dr. Pushcheck. And welcome, everyone, once again to the board meeting. I'm going to share a PowerPoint. You'll see later in the agenda, the actual safety, health and safety plan that we have to submit to the Department of Ed is about 46 pages long. And I thought that that wouldn't be very effective to go through that document with everyone, so I tried to summarize all the key points. And then after I get through that, we can have some discussion, or just questions, and we can handle them at that time. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so this plan, it was, it started as a template that came from the Department of Ed. And, you know, so it already was crafted to be, you know, to steer districts towards a safe reopening, because there was a lot of research done by the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and other reputable organizations. Right, you know, and then they kind of designed the format, the layout, the areas that we needed to address. So that's what we, but before we got into that, we thought it would be good to get some, a survey of the community, the parents and students, to see some key pieces of data. And the first question we asked in our survey was simple. If we're in the green phase, like we're in right now with the least restrictions, will you send your students to school? And you can see that we only had a 60% response rate, but it was pretty consistent as we collected responses. So it's not perfect data, but it gives us at least a little inkling of what people are thinking. So in the green, it looks like the majority of people are feeling comfortable sending their children to school. This undecided part, you know, that, they might just be waiting to see what our plan looks like. They may be perfectly okay sending them, or once they see the plan, they might say, no, I'm not sure that option's right for me. So same question in the yellow, and you can see things start to change pretty dramatically. Only about half of the respondents feel comfortable. We have a lot, we have just a lot of no's right out of the box. And then, you know, these undecided folks are probably, you know, in that same thought pattern that I know, I know I am as a parent. You know, I want to see what the school's plan is before I make my decision. So looking at social distancing, our busing operation is obviously the biggest challenge. So we thought we would ask, hey, who's willing to transport their, their child, son or daughter, to school? And who's, who's probably going to ride the bus? Now, I realize there's some questions, that some, some people probably responded to this in a way where they said, well, yeah, they'll ride the bus, but I'll also transport them, knowing that maybe they, I can take them there in the morning, but I can't in the afternoon. So I didn't dig that deep into the data. I actually didn't collect it in that way, so I don't think it's possible to analyze it in that way. But you can see, I, well, the next step is probably going to be to send a letter out to every parent and ask them, you know, to commit. So we really know. I mean, so if you're willing to drive your, your child and you can, that's going to lower bus ridership, and that's going to help us redistribute students on the buses to the maximum extent we can, if it's possible. We did meet with Durham Transportation, and they're committed in the green phase to 48 students per bus. So that's two per seat, all the way back. And they said, you know, if they need to add extra runs, sweeper runs, to make sure they get those numbers down. Because we do have a couple buses, a few that have ridership of 60-plus. But they're, they're committed to, to working that out with us. All right, so these are some of the more important questions, I think. If you're not going to send your students to school, how are they going to be educated? And you can see that this other here, if I, if I broke that down, a lot of people put things like, you know, my, my son or daughter is coming to school because we both work. And then there was a handful of charter, people that indicate they go to a charter or a private school. And we threw out this option, you know, would you consider a district provided charter school? So there's 230 people there. So there's support for that. So we wanted to go, and remember in the survey, this explained that this cyber is more like what you would experience at a cyber charter school. In fact, we're going to be using some of the same platforms that, that cyber charters use. And you'll, you'll see in a minute, it costs a lot less. So there's a lot of data on this page. Of the people that said they were interested in a district cyber option, you know, one that would start right from the beginning of the year, and they could stay on that path as long as they felt comfortable. You can see, can you see my cursor moving? Yeah, so, over here, to school in the green, you know, 64 people. In the yellow, you can see how much that drops. And just a flat-out no, there's 57 right out of the box there in the yellow. And then again, we have this big undecided bunch. And depending on what the plan is when they see it, you know, they might, they might jump to here, or they might jump, you know, to, to there. What we don't want them doing is, is going to a private cyber charter, because our program is going to be superior. And secondly, there's unbelievable cost related to that. And I'm, you know, I've, I've talked about this before, I've put it into newsletters. Private cyber charters are really draining school district budgets across the state. So here's an example. And before I get to that, you can see that the more concerned folks are the earlier age grade, or the earlier grade levels. And I think if I was a parent, you know, that would be me, too. You know, with, with your young ones, you really worry those first couple of years. You want to know they're, they're going to be safe. So I'll throw up this example here. You know, again, these are the three key bars, these people that are considering some type of cyber option under some kind of condition. And we don't, we don't know what that is, but they're thinking about it. So private cyber students, I looked at our tuition rate today off the PDE website. For every student that goes to private cyber, we stroke them a check for $12,500. And that's an average cost. It's more for special ed students. And there's nothing we can say about that, we have to pay that school. So you can see, in that situation, that's $750,000. And just so you know, we currently have about 60 students in private cyber, and we budgeted $750,000. So this would be an additional $750,000. So you're looking, you're, you're getting into the millions now that you're spending on 120 kits, potentially. Now contrast that, the average cost of using these platforms, like Edgenuity, Pearson, Learning Academy, K-12, some of these that we, that we use them already for credit recovery for students, that only costs us about $2,700 a student per year. That's an average cost. So that's only $166,000. And of course, we're getting a large CARES grant of about $240,000. And we can use those funds to cover students that want this online cyber option from the beginning if they go, if they go with us. So that's a little bit of the data, and I kind of add on to that as I go. We formed just a high-level leadership team, including a little bit, you know, people from each area of operation in the district. And so we wanted to look at all the guidance and come up with a high-level plan that's consistent with CDC, American Pediatric Academy recommendations, et cetera. And then that, this plan, you know, once we go through it and the board feels comfortable with it, we approve it, then it gets pushed down to the principal level, and then they're going to, each principal, you know, is going to have their own mini building team where they have to flesh out the details. You know, so this plan is the overarching, here's the high standards, the goals, the operational concept, and then that means the logistics needs to be worked out in the buildings, because it's going to be different for each building. So in general, our health and safety plan is going to do these things. You know, these are just kind of those, you know, across-the-board interventions to keep infection and infection risk and exposure risk down. We have purchased, we've probably spent, I want to say $175,000 in, from another CARES grant, to purchase this material. We just got one of these fogging sanitizing machines today. We had one of the custodians wearing it that looked like something on a Ghostbusters, but you can actually totally clean a room in about 30 seconds, vaporize the whole thing. And we also bought masks. CDC is recommending cloth masks, and there's a link here on this presentation. But we ordered, we just had 50,000 of these delivered. So we're going to be able to give any staff member and any student that forgets their mask, because we know that's going to happen, we'll be able to give them a CDC-grade face covering. So I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but this is pretty interesting. We bought this thermal scanning technology, and it works like the thermal scans that you may have seen the airports are now using. So it's a camera or a couple cameras mounted back from the main entrance, and as students come through, it, it can identify and take pictures of students that might have an elevated temperature. And then we'll have the protocol for, for that, when they get flagged. So on the green, least restrictions, we're on campus. This is probably as close to the new normal as it will look. We're still going to have to practice social distancing. Everyone's going to have to wear masks. In the yellow phase, this is, this is where we have to, we have to be more proactive with social distancing, and this gets into the busing issue. It's really not possible with 25 buses and four bus runs a day to get the ridership down to the CDC recommendation, or even close to it. And that's 12 kids per bus. So even if we put another run or two in, I mean, we're going to run out of time before we can transport all the kids to school to get, to get the day started. I'll talk more about that in a second. So the solution to that is to cut the student body in half. And we feel that having K-6 on the campus is really important, because that's a critical learning time, especially for new readers. This is also the age group that parents need the most help with daycare with. And, and we're thinking that the older students, who are more prone to infection, the younger ones, you know, they're saying are less prone to be a carrier or get infected, you know, it makes sense to bring them here for a variety of ways. And then the 7 through 12 folks, the, you know, the older kids are more susceptible to, to an infection or exposure. So we'll leave them at home on an online platform. And I'll go back through these three phases with just a little more detail. So in the red phase, of course, this is when the governor says, okay, most restrictive, everybody, man, you know, stay home unless you're going to the grocery store or other essential needs. So during that phase, obviously, we have to close all of our buildings. And then this district provided cyber school, like I said, we want to be proactive. We think we can offer something much better to the students than these private cyber charters. And I can add layers to that in a minute, but this is, it's just not going to be the same as what we offered in the spring. These are professional learning platforms. There'll be one of our teachers or multiple teachers assigned to these programs to monitor our students, track their progress, help them out if they need it. And of course, they remain enrolled here, so they have access to other resources, special ed teachers, counselors, teacher assistants, you know, the whole range of services that we offer. So in the green, you know, there are just a few bullets here. You can see we're at 100%, regular Monday through Friday schedule. We believe we can get the bus loads to 48. And of course, everyone's wearing masks on the bus. The food service, we're going to have to stagger lunches and create some makeshift lunch space areas in addition to the cafeteria, so we can get some decent social distancing during lunch. And of course, we're going to have added safety precautions, cleaning routines. We'll have more custodians working in the day. You know, we'll, we'll probably end up with some, something like a three-shift custodian situation, where we're just cleaning all day long. All right, so this spells it out really clearly. K-6 is on the campus, 712 is online. And again, what they're going to get is not going to be the same as in the spring. The teachers, they wanted to stay with the Teams platform, but we're going to be in servicing here over the next couple of weeks, the teachers on Teams, on how to standardize it. And we're also adding in two applications to Teams, Pairdeck and Loom, which we think will make for more robust, interactive type of lessons. And of course, the, the big one here is that these students that have chosen this track, they're following our curriculum. So if we go back to the green, you know, they can transition back into the classroom, and everyone's in the same place. Okay, and I think, I think I don't want to be redundant here, but in the yellow, this, we're basically cutting the school capacity to 50%, and we're going to spread the kids out. So K through 2 will stay at the elementary center, but, you know, we're going to use space that's vacated by the, the third and fourth pod to really distance the students out. And then grades 3 and 4 will most likely go to Seneca, and grades 5 and 6 will stay at WAMs. And, and again, there, you know, we were drastically underusing the capacity in those buildings at that point, so we can easily run multiple shifts in a cafeteria that's at half-capacity. That's the major things there. The other thing is, is transportation. I just did a little bit of kitchen table math, and up here in the right-hand corner, you can see, in, in the morning, our first run, we have 25 buses that go out. And that usually starts around 6:15 in the morning. We would go for grades 3 through 6, because there's more of them, that's 408 kids, and our average bus ridership is 16. Some, some of them less, some a little bit more. So we, you know, we're getting, and if you, if you put siblings in seats, you know, you're really getting close to that CDC guideline of keeping those kids six feet apart. And then the second run would start 7:15 roughly. We only have 17 buses, though, to pick up kids for the second run, because the, the missing buses are not missing, they're driving parochial school students into, into town. So when you do the math there, you have 16. Now, these numbers in reality probably be a little bit higher, because we, we, there'll be parochial school kids on the bus, but we don't know how many yet. And that, that varies every year. Sometimes it's not a lot, sometimes it's a lot. Okay, in the red phase, of course, we're going to transition to all online. And one of the, one of the pieces of feedback we got from parents last year is Teams didn't work well, wasn't very friendly for K through 2 students. So we looked at some, some resources, our, our teachers can use some digital learning platforms, and CSO was recommended. We did some test piloting with it, with, with some parents and students, which received favorably. So our K-12 teachers will be guiding their students with CSO. And then grades 3 through 12, similar to what I said before, you know, when we're in the yellow phase, we have that standardized Teams platform, staff development, and additional And then our online option, as our survey indicates, you know, that there, there is some appetite for this. I read today that the cyber charter schools are experiencing an optech in people applying. So this option, again, uses professionally-designed learning platforms that'll be led by our employees. And you can see just some of the ones that we use. And we have access to more. You know, I, I think we're going to take this on a case-by-case basis, counselors working with the parents and the student to decide which package or combination of packages will work the best for them. The advantage is, though, they stay enrolled with us, and they have access to all the supports. Their progress is going to be monitored by us. And parents always have the option, at certain points, to transition back into the other learning pathways. Now, say they, say they do a quarter or a semester, and they just don't like it, no problem, we'll get them back into the yellow or the green phase or the red phase, wherever we're at, we'll get them into that, into that pathway. And of course, through grant funds, we're, we can provide computers at home, hotspots, unlimited 4G data plans. So more about that will be coming out early August, but we'll get an application out so that we can see how many parents are really interested. And then, then we'll tool the program up. We'll have to work with the Teachers Association, depending on how we're going to schedule this. But I've already been in contact with the union president, and, you know, I, we'll, we'll be able to work something out, I think that's, that's fair and equitable. And then I just, this is my last shot, just a simple chart, you know, at a glance, you can kind of see what happens with each grade, where they're at, and in what phase. All right, so I threw a lot out there at you, so where do we want to start with discussion? Do people have some questions? We're down to principals here, because we've all been kind of thinking and talking about this together. So if I don't have the answer, somebody else might.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Berlin, for your presentation, and also for leading this task force to develop the plan. I did want to also thank Mr. Shawn Mattson for serving on the task force. He not only represented the board, but represented parents as well. We do have over 40 attendees and citizens joining us tonight. I would like to welcome them. And I would just like to share the format of the next part of our meeting. We're going to have a discussion among the board members and the administrators. And then I would like to allow the attendees to ask a question through the question and answer feature, if you could provide your name and your question. However, I'd like you to keep it directed towards Mr. Berlin's presentation tonight. As he mentioned, there will be specific building level plans that come up next. So for the attendees, please don't ask a building level specific question, just because we don't have that developed yet. So you can see the overall approach to the three phases. So if you do have any questions after the board discussion, we'll entertain any general type questions. And if we can't answer them, save those questions for the individual meetings that the principals will have for each of their respective buildings. But what a, what a nice response to have so many people joining us tonight, over 40, and we certainly welcome you this evening. So the next phase will be the board discussion. So I will open up now for questions, comments for, for Mr. Berlin, and then if he can't answer them, he can certainly direct to the appropriate administrator. So any board members would like to start us off?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
First of all, I know that the people who are in attendance didn't see the full 47 or 46-page document, and you guys did, really did an excellent job. It is, although it's high-level, it's very thorough. I, I'm curious, so I know there are so many of the questions that the people watching have, are building level questions. So what's the estimated ETA? When are we expecting to have the building level plans presented?
All right, so the principals are working on those this week. And then, at the end of the week, we'll get together as an admin team, because there's going to be some things that, you know, that they can't sort it out without a total team approach input-wise. Now, because when you start digging into logistics of running a school in an alternate way, there's always unexpected things that are going to come up. So I would think that probably after this is approved, maybe that third week of July, we'll be able to start mailing some material home, and it'll be building-specific.
Because there's, you know, talk about going, the fact that we're in green right now, but numbers are rising, and there's the potential we could slip into yellow. Has there been, talk about the possibility that, you know, the state might say we're in green one week, and then a month later it could go to yellow, and then two months later it could go to green. Has there been talk about, you know, as the state makes those changes, like we would flip-flop? Or once we made a change, say we started in green and we went to yellow, might we just stick with yellow in fear of it becoming like a flip-flop situation, like a lot of change for the kids?
Yeah, um, we totally have that local control. You know, we, we can't ignore a more serious rating, like red. But when it comes to green and yellow, you know, if we feel like, boy, we're not sure what's happening, we, you know, as, the consensus is we should stay, you know, in, in the yellow for a while longer to ensure that we're, things aren't that disruptive, that's absolutely a possibility.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Blazer.
Mr. Berlin, can you talk, I did go through the 46-page document, I know it has a little bit of info about this, but can you talk about teachers specifically? So A, if they would become positive, I guess, to me, it sounds like it starts with the symptoms, but a positive test might take nine to 11 days today to find out that you really were positive. So how that is handled as far as quarantining those students or whatnot? And then B, I know substitutes are a big problem prior to COVID, so have we had any time to wrap our head around, what does it mean if we don't have enough teachers to teach? Okay, those are good questions. So if, if a teacher's positive, they're going to be sent, you know, if they're starting to experience symptoms, fever, in school, or even the night before they notice it, the classroom is going to be closed for 24 hours, and it needs to be thoroughly disinfected. So in that situation, it's likely those students would need to stay home, or, and/or we start the contact tracing process. And, and we do have a couple staff getting trained to be contact tracers through the John Hopkins Online Website Program. Mary Ray, I think, has already been trained, and I think Krista Wehan is, is in the process. We might add a few more. And in that situation, you're trying to find out who's been within six feet of that teacher for a 15-minute period of time. So that means, you know, that process may eliminate kids that have to stay home, and it may make clear which kids do have to stay home. But at that point, we're in contact with the Health Department. But that, that's just kind of how it, it may, it may- But that, that's just kind of how it, it, you know, it may, it may fork in, in two directions. But definitely the first step is twenty-four hours closed, start contact tracing, disinfect the room. Um, the second question about subs, I don't really have an answer for that. I don't think anybody does. Um, I was looking on the PD website on the amount of teacher cert, uh, certifications that have been issued over the past, you know, ten years. And yet if you go back that far, they were putting out about twenty-five thousand teachers per year. And this past year, I think that number was closer to five thousand. Um, and so that, that, that's what's driving the substitute shortage in general. And now we're starting to feel it on the teacher side, uh, when we're trying to hire full-time people, there's not as many out there. Um, so there is no good answer there. Uh, i- if that, if that becomes an issue, you know, then I think we're gonna have to get together as a team and look at, uh, perhaps an A B schedule, you know, say the problem is at the elementary. Um, we certainly don't, what we do now is if we don't have a sub, it happens occasionally, we'll take twenty-five students and break them up amongst four other sections. That's, you know, not in normal times, that's okay. But in COVID times, I don't think you wanna increase class density and start mixing classes of kids with other classes of kids. Um, you know, that, that's one of the things that the elementary center has going for it is those kids are self-contained all day long. You know, so if you get some type of, uh, exposure infection event, you know, hopefully it's limited to just that classroom and you can contact trace and, you know, get those students what they need, get them back into school as soon as you can. So I, I, not to ramble on too long, but I think in eight, we'd have to consider an A B schedule to cut the density of the students once again. Um, so we might have half a class learning online, half a class learning, uh, in school and then flop. So hopefully I answered your questions there. Um, if I could, I'll just take a second. There's a couple, a couple live questions here. Uh, the district provided cyber school, is that gonna be a nine to three schedule or, um, can you do it in the evening? And, uh, yeah, it's gonna, it can, it's gonna, there's gonna be some synchronous and asynchronous learning that happens. Uh, so there'll be times where, um, the teacher's gonna wanna, uh, probably, uh, video conference with, with the student or, or a class of students, you know, we might group them into virtual classes. And then there's times where there'll be pre-recorded assignments or other things that can be done later in the evening. Um, what happens if a teacher or student ends up in COVID positive? I think I just answered that one. Um, what is going to happen when kids start overheating and kids are getting sick from wearing masks because they're touching their face and masks all day? Yeah, I, this one worries me too, especially, you know, I, my office is hooked onto the elementary and I walk through the elementary all the time. Mostly when I need a break, cause it makes me feel better to watch all, all the, uh, the students having a good time and learning. Um, but yeah, I do worry about that. I, but I think the answer is simple. Uh, according to the P A department, uh, Secretary of Health, there's gonna be times where we can spread the kids out and give them a mask break. You know, if we can get them six feet apart, they can take their masks off. If we can get them six feet apart at their desk in the classroom, when the lesson starts, they can all take their masks off. Um, so, uh, yeah, I, that's an issue, but I, I, I think we'll be able to mitigate that. Next question for the district cyber options, are they instructor-led or self-paced by student? Uh, it's a little bit of both. Uh, one of our faculty members will oversee the program and then, uh, it, it may involve, uh, several certified instructors. Um, but those programs are set up so that the company can either provide teachers or our teachers can oversee the students and we're gonna be doing the latter. What about distancing the kids in school bus so they don't have to wear useless masks? Yeah, that's, I mean, I understand it. I really get where that's coming from, but, um, you know, the Secretary of Health said we're wearing masks all the time. Uh, so that's, that's, that is the answer. What if people choose not to make their kids wear masks to school? Yeah, that's a good question. I think we're gonna have to take that on a case by case situation. Um, there may be medical reasons that a student can't wear a mask and we're gonna have to accommodate those kids in some way. Um, so that would definitely be, uh, discussions with the admin and the parents to see if we can work something out. Are the classrooms being adapted to space students six feet apart while sitting in class? Uh, yes, we're trying to do that to the maximum extent possible. Um, for, for example, maintenance, maintenance went through, um, the elementary today and like kindergarten or first grade, they have tables, uh, where four kids sit at a table. So we're removing all those tables and we're putting in small desks so that they can be spaced out properly. Uh, when in district cyber school, will there be actual grades instead of participation grades? Yeah, those will, those will be A B C grades. Um, will class sizes be reduced in the green phase and what is the max amount of kids per classroom? Um, the recommendation there in the green phase is, uh, socially distanced to the maximum extent possible. Uh, so there may be situations where we're not six feet apart. But again, in those situations, the masks would have to be on. Uh, for those students medically unable to wear a mask, will they be required to only do online instruction? Um, I can't answer that, cause it's, it's kind of varied, uh, according to the individual, especially if they have a disability or something. Um, we, there's a lot of factors that we have to take into account. Uh, can you discuss the procedure to maintaining student and staff safety during chorus and band? Um, we don't have an answer for that yet. There's a large study that's supposed to come out in a week. Um, there's been some preliminary guidance, uh, for band instruments showing that, uh, if you space band instruments out, you, you get very little, uh, that you don't get that super spread like you do with, uh, the choir students. Um, I saw a German study that said if the students are, are, are spatial, uh, spaced out appropriately, choir kids can wear a mask, they can wear, sing for short periods of time and take frequent breaks. But we're hoping that this, this more robust national study is gonna give us more guidance there. Um, so yeah, a lot, a lot of unknowns. Is there anything I missed?
Ken, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Well, I, I guess it's, there's a question in there. Um, one of the, the things that concerned me as a parent was the mask and I know everyone's thinking it. I was comforting and looking at that forty-six page document that you actually referenced and you, you kind of alluded to it in your one response about the masks. But there are times in which they can't, they don't have to wear the mask, they can take the mask off. So how, I, I mean, I think it would be important that we, in our building plans, can communicate that to parents, they understand what those times are, because that, that for me was a relief to see it spelled out in that document, that there are times when, if they're in class and they're, they're, the desks are six feet apart, that the kid can take the mask off. You know, that to me was comforting. And i- if I had a fear that my kid was gonna be stuck in a mask all day, that actually alleviated my fear.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's exactly right. So I mean, it, it's the bus ride, it's entering the building, it's walking through the halls to get to your class, you get seated in your desk, you take your mask off. Um, lunchtime, you know, wherever that's gonna occur, we're at various locations, put the mask on, go out in the hallway, uh, get to your eating destination and take the mask off, uh, and have lunch. I mean, it's really that, you know, if you break it down like that, it's, that's what it is, it's that simple. I think, but I know there's a lot of fear around, I, I get that.
I think even recess is one of those locations that was, you know, depending on how recess was structured, if that was a time. So I, I'm just saying, whenever the building, um, plans come out, definitely, I mean, that's articulated, I think a lot of fear would go away if they understand that it's pretty, pretty reasonable approach to the mask. It isn't a hundred percent mask the entire time there.
Mr. President. Questions from the board? Yes, Mrs. Farrell.
Um, I have a few if I may go through them.
Yes, please. And then we'll, to the, um, attendees' questions after.
Okay. In regards to, uh, Mr. Blazer's question about if a teacher tests positive, um, or if a student in that classroom would test positive, if the teacher does have to quarantine, are they going to be required to use their sick time to do so?
Um, well, at some point maybe, but the CARES Act provides up to eighty hours of paid leave. Um, so that's, you know, up to two weeks of paid leave. Hopefully that would be enough. Beyond that though, they're gonna have to use paid time off or FMLA or some combination of all those. That, that's my understanding at this point.
And so then if students needed to be quarantined as well and they were able to do online learning, is that an option or how will they be marked?
Say that again?
So if a student needs to be quarantined for the fourteen days, how are they marked and are they able to do some type of online schooling in those fourteen days to still be able to keep up?
Yeah, that's a good question. You, yeah, w- we're gonna need to arrange for homework to go home. Um, I don't know that we can turn on a dime, uh, and, and, and get them up and running online that quickly if we have to distribute hotspots of computers. But I guess it would depend on the, the length of time we expect a teacher to be out, you know? So again, those are gonna have to be case by case.
And then is there, is there additional classrooms in the schools that if you do have to shut down a classroom for twenty-four hours, that you'd be able to move the whole, the rest of the, the students to?
Yes, yeah, we have extra classrooms in, in all three buildings.
Um, sorry, I just have a couple more. Four, and I guess I'm thinking elementary specific, but looking at if kids, um, if parents are choosing to drop off children, is there going to be any flexibility with an earlier drop-off time that parents would be able to drop off students versus busing? Or is the drop-off time's gonna remain the same?
Well, I, I mean, I can tell you that we do have parents that, that bring their students in early and, um, we, we kind of solve those issues one at a time. You know, sometimes we might need to, to, um, have an aide or something come, come in early to, to monitor a lobby or something like that. So I mean, those are solvable problems.
And I guess I asked that because I've actually had a few parents say that they would prefer to drop their students off at school, but with them being elementary, it's a little bit too late for them then to make it to work. So I guess that's what, um, what made me ask that question.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you can't really beat the time-space continuum. Some of those things, I, you know, we'll do the best we can, but I don't know that we can solve every one of those situations.
Yep, fair answer. Just wondered where that, where that was at. Um, and then I look at six fifteen as really early for third and fourth graders if we go to the yellow phase, but I think that's something that we can approach when we, when we would get there.
Yeah, and I, and I have to tell you, I, I agree with you. It's early for, uh, for our high school and middle school students. And I'll tell you what drives that, there's two things, geography and the parochial school students. We have to start that early so we can get all of our kids here by seven fifteen, so we can send seven or eight buses into Erie, uh, to distribute to twenty-five different non-public schools. So that's what, you know, I get, I get that question asked in a regular school year and i- is there an answer? Uh, not, not an affordable one. Um, so that's, that's why that system is the way it is.
And then I just have one last question. Is there any concerns from the teachers' union about where this stands or is, should there be any concerns on our side that the teachers' union's going to come back and say, we're not, we're not going back on August twenty-fifth?
Well, I've, I've been in contact with Mike Grove, the president, and I'm, I'm not getting, um, any of those, uh, type of, um, pieces of information. Uh, we did survey the staff, uh, to, to, to ask them, you know, in the, in the green or the yellow, we anticipate some on-campus teaching, uh, you know, let us know if, if you're not sure if you can come back. And we did have some staff tell us that, um, depending on the, uh, the, the plan itself and the details, they might not feel comfortable coming back. Um, but those are things that, you know, we're gonna work through that with them, just, just like all the other school districts are gonna work through, with, through it with them.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you very much for everyone's time that's been put into this.
Okay, I, I missed a few questions here. I'll see if I can knock these off. Uh, why not utilize an A B session schedule no matter the color phase? Um, the deciding factor there was childcare and the K through six, uh, the needs of K through six students. Um, so that's what, that's what drove that particular, um, decision. How will special ed be handled? Um, Mrs. Nappenberger, do you wanna, uh, speak to that?
Sure, I could talk about that. In the green phase, it really isn't, it's not going to look any different for students who are identified as special ed. Um, they'll still receive their services and supports that they would normally just, um, as if, you know, it were any other school year. When we go to the yellow phase, uh, K through six will be coming every day with the rest of the students, so that's not going to be an issue. Um, seven through twelve, we're looking at if those students have to go on, into distance learning, we're looking at bringing in students identified, um, as special education at least two days a week to be with their case manager, uh, to get some intensive remediation and also help with their online instruction. Um, and then as far as some of our special populations that have more significant concerns, they may be staying the entire time, um, through yellow, so they may come every day, again, being with their teacher, being socially distant because they need that, um, one-to-one that, or that face-to-face instruction rather than the distance learning.
Alright, I'm looking for other questions.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
Um, and it's about the tech school. Um, so has there been discussion on, um, I don't know how, how, how does it work when, you know, if, if we, if, say the state goes to yellow, but we as a district, or, excuse me, say we are in yellow and the state goes to green and we as a district say we're not ready to go to green? How does it work in terms of tech students? Um, and do, do they still report, you know, because the tech school's in green? Um, how does that work? I know that every district's gonna have different plans. How do we accommodate tech students?
Um, well, I, there's frequently days where we're not in session, but the tech school is, you know, so we do have bus runs, pick them up. Um, so that's one part of the solution. The tech school plan, if they go yellow, they're going to an A B day. Um, so half of our students will go there on an A day and half of our students will go on a B day. Um, and they did that, uh, because it's just that the lab space is just not there to socially distance a hundred percent of the building. Um, here's some other questions. What happens if kids do not stay six feet apart from one another? Will they be punished? Um, that's not gonna be our first, um, our, our first choice. Uh, you know, we're, we're gonna work with students and parents. Um, this is a traumatic thing for everybody, probably the biggest, uh, challenge most of us has, have faced in our lives. And I just don't think that punishing students for not wearing a mask is, is the way to go. I think education and working with them is, is what we need to do. Uh, will students have to, have to eat lunches by themselves at their desks or will they be spaced apart at lunch tables? We're, we're, our goal is to get the lunch tables spread apart and have some staggered lunch schedules. Um, we, we might have, we might, we might set a gym up, for example, with some extra tables at lunchtime and split the lunch in half, so there's only fifty percent of the students in either place. Uh, but there may be times where desks are the best option and I'm gonna leave that up to the principals. Um, what gathering area options will be available for children? How much time will they be shut into their classroom? Um, you know, I, we're gonna encourage teachers, you know, to, to rotate some of that gathering area time. Um, because those classrooms, especially in some of the buildings, could, can start to feel pretty small if you're stuck in there all day. So I, I think that would be a great time for a mask break. Let's go out in the gathering area, let's really spread out, take your mask off, uh, for ten minutes and, you know, yeah, let's read an article or a book or do something for pleasure. That's allowed. Um, I answered that one. Will classrooms be stripped of books, games and other shared activities? Um, not necessarily. Uh, we're, we're going to try to have duplicates of things. We're going to try to have duplicates of things, of things that are typically shared. The menu might not be as big as it normally is, but that is in our health and safety plan. Is there an in-school plan for special ed children? Okay, I think I think we've already answered that. If a student tests positive in a classroom, how long will the other students in the classroom need to be quarantined? Again, that'll depend on contact tracing, you know, and we'll be in touch with the health department. We'll start that process right away. And that's going to guide who needs to be quarantined and for how long. Will the YMCA be open before and after care? Mrs. Barboni, I know you had some communication with them.
Yes, I spoke with Corey Wurst. We've been in contact. He's the director of our local site and they are planning on being open. They're going to be taking temperatures as students arrive. That way, if someone does have a high temp, the parent's right there with them, and so the parent doesn't have to leave and come back and pick their kiddo up. They can just be taken right there. They're trying to move some of their furniture around so that they have larger PlayStations in areas for the kids so that they can be socially distanced.
Will parents be able to watch kids play sports? At one point, the state guidance seemed to say no. Right now, that guidance is in the green. You cannot have gatherings in a facility of more than 250 people. So that's an unanswerable question at this point. And PIAAA, who governs sports in Pennsylvania, has said they're waiting for more guidance from the governor and the secretary of health before they weigh in on whether or not sports are even run this fall. I hope that they do. With the current 250's limit, it might not allow spectators, you know, especially you get two football teams, the coaching staffs, the referees, the ambulance, you know, you might be really close to that number before one fan or parent even walks through the gate. So that's a wait and see. Could you please give an example of what the day would look like for my third grader? Well, in the green, we're going to try to make it as close to normal as possible. And in the yellow, same thing. They're just going to be spread out among a larger space. If a student is quarantined due to possible exposure at school, will a sibling also need to stay home? That goes back to that contact tracing process. Answer, maybe. There has been some talk that spread occurs in ventilation systems. Has that been looked at for our schools? I can tell you that our schools meet all of the PA Health Department requirements for ventilation. We actually turn over the air in every room every 30 minutes. So we're constantly bringing in fresh air and expelling stale air. And I, you know, I think we can brag about our facility because, you know, the staff, the parents, all the taxpayers, there's been a lot of effort from everybody for this beautiful campus. And I can really say I think we have some of the best ventilation in Erie County among any of the schools. Preschool is opening. I think the answer to that is yes, right, Hillary? Okay. If kids want to wear a hat that has a face shield, will they be allowed? Or if they want to wear a mask all day? I would hope the faculty will help keep kids nice to one another no matter what. So the CDC guidance says that the mask can enhance mask, or the face shields can enhance mask safety. So our recommendation would be if you want to wear a face shield, that's fine, but you really should have a mask on as well. Will the elementary start and end time be adjusted to account for the staggered arrival and dismissal times? Yeah, if we get into the yellow, you know, the third and fourth grade students are going to be picked up and dropped off earlier. So I hope that answers that question.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin, for your willingness to answer all of those questions. I do know Mr. Paris had requested to be recognized for questions. Mr. Paris, Josh Paris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ken, I'd like to go back to the cleaning. Are we going to staff up? Or are we covered staff-wise for the buildings to be thoroughly cleaned? And the same with the buses. Is Durham going to put additional people on? Are they wiping all the surfaces in the buses or are they fogging the buses? How is that going to take place?
Yeah, so Durham, we had that conversation with them and we bought five of these high-tech mask fogging machines. And some of those will be deployed to the bus garage. And different staff, not the bus drivers, will disinfect the buses between the AM run and the PM run. And then again, after the PM run. And then, you know, in talking with Eric, Mr. Schultz, Building and Grounds, he really thinks that we can stagger our custodians. We have 18, we actually have 20, 21 or 22 if you count the daytime people. You know, we want to break that up so that the building is essentially getting cleaned all day long. You know, so several times a day, someone with the fogger is going to go into the bathrooms and disinfect them. Same thing after lunches, go in there, wipe everything down, make sure everything's clean before the next group comes in. So those are the kind of protocols we'll have in place. Basically cleaning all day.
Okay. I vaguely remember something in the main document that addressed hand sanitizer. Was there a section on that that we could, you know, was it available on the buses? Were the kids going to have to use it as they come into the building?
Okay, so right now, we have Durham looking into hand sanitizer and if PA will let us mount the hand sanitizer to the bus. You know, there's a lot of strict rules around what you can and can't do in buses. But we know that an exception's been made in other states, so we're hoping we can mount hand sanitizer right there at the door of the bus and teach the kids to just hit it on their way in. The other option would be to have a bottle by the driver and the kids could use it that way.
And my last question is in regards to the teachers. Was the plan developed with a full teaching staff available, or did you factor in that some teachers will probably not be returning because they're caring for people with compromised immune system or they themselves have it?
Yeah, I'm hoping after we get this plan approved, and I did send a draft out to the faculty today, that, you know, people will start to let us know what their situations are if they have one. But, you know, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we won't know till we know. But did we design the plan with having missing employees? No, we designed the plan from the standpoint that we're going to have most everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. Any other board members have questions? Mrs. Pikovic?
Yeah, thanks, Andy. I do. Just two questions.
I had a few more questions, Mr. President.
If the fall sports gets canceled, there's been talk about schools moving those sports to the spring. Would our district be doing that?
I read the PIA release today, and the PIAAA has no interest in running fall sports in the spring. Came out today. They're waiting for further guidance. PIAAA is not saying anything. But that was my understanding.
Okay.
Couple of, oh, go ahead, Julie.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Just a couple of late questions on the board here. Will we be notified if our child would have to share a seat on the bus? You can expect that in the green, your child will be in a seat with another child. In the yellow, you most likely will not be in that situation. But if you wanted to know, you could always call the bus garage and they can tell you. But we are going to assign seats on the buses for green and yellow situations. And again, that's going to help us with contact tracing. Some people are sensitive to hand sanitizer and it causes reaction such as a sore throat. Well, I think if somebody's in that situation, we'll see if we can find another type of hand cleaner that is acceptable to them. Some states allow people that have a college education and passes background checks. I think you're talking about emergency certified school teachers, and the answer is yes, we do that in Pennsylvania, and we do it here in the school district.
Okay, for our attendees, Mr. Berlin has answered 33 questions. If you have any further questions, I would ask that you send an email to Mr. Berlin or the appropriate principal at this time. We're going to finish with our board discussion, and then we're going to continue on with our work session agenda item. Mrs. Pikovic, the floor is still yours.
Okay, thanks, Mr. President. Just one more question. I did not see this in a report, so that's why I'm asking. Maybe I missed it, but for the safety of our faculty and administrators and the students, if there is someone who goes out of town to a hotspot, can we add into our report that they need to have that 14-day quarantine that the CDC is recommending? Because I know we talked about it for, well, it's not in the sports one either, so if we can add it to the sports one as well?
Yeah, so that's new. That came out since we drafted this. But yeah, this week we'll take a look at that CDC guidance, and they're recommending quarantine, not mandating, and they're not going to police it, but I think we can talk that over with the admin team. And I know I have another meeting with the superintendents this week, and I want to get a feel for what they're doing as well. And I think that'll help make the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, Mrs. Pikovic. Any other board members, discussion or questions?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Blazer.
So, Mr. Berlin, when you were talking, or actually, I think it was one of the parent questions about social gathering, how much time the students would spend in their classroom versus, you know, and you talked about some breaks and giving some time. I just wanted to make sure I understood the document. It looked like that would be just within their own grouping, such as their classroom. So I know parents that are looking forward to schools resuming for social interaction. It seems to me if we follow our guidance, then there's certainly going to be limitations on that as far as how much they're going to socialize with anybody that's not quote-unquote in their homeroom. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yep, that's 100% accurate. At least at the elementary and a great deal at the middle school. Of course, in the high school, it's impossible to do that, so there's going to be more mixing at the high school. And there's just no way to solve that situation because of the way high schools are structured. But for the lower grades, Mr. Blazer, definitely. They're going to be limited to the students that they see on the bus and that they're in their classroom with.
And then my last question is just about the playground. I saw something in there about their playgrounds would be reopened and they'd be allowed for recess, but it didn't say anything about sanitizing. I realize how much work that could be to try to sanitize in between every group, but is that?
Well, again, that's why we bought the micro fogger machines. They're about $3,000 apiece that the grant.
That the goal, or then even open for public, I guess, would be the other question.
Yeah, I think we need to keep the playgrounds closed to the public. Oh, I think he.
Yeah, Mr. Blazer had indicated he had a rough connection, so just do the best we can to answer.
So yeah, I think it's possible to do some sanitizing on the playground equipment in between groups when that's permitted.
I'm sorry, I must have read that part wrong. I actually felt like I read that the equipment wouldn't be used.
I thought the same thing.
Yeah, that's, I think that's in the yellow phase. I think it's the green phase where you can allow groups one at a time.
What I'm working on right now, if I can hop in for one section,
Yes, Mrs. Barboni.
To rotate, to kind of make a recess schedule. Because we do have a couple of little areas. We have the playground, but then we also have the outdoor classroom area. We also have the picnic shelter area, so we can make some rotations as to what groups would, you know, be allowed on the equipment maybe, you know, one day that week, and then they would get the cement the other day, and then another day might be in the classroom, so there would be rotation like that, but we want to try to get them out while the weather is still warm.
Thank you, Mrs. Barboni. I wanted to remind all of our attendees and our participants that this meeting is being recorded and it will be posted along with our other board meetings at the website. So if you want to review any documents that Mr. Berlin had presented or his PowerPoint presentation or answers to questions, those will all be recorded and available for viewing in a short while. And then also to be reminded, this is a work session, so we don't make any decisions tonight. The plan will be voted on next week, which is July 20th. And then I do know the administration's plan is to post everything to the website as well as getting a mailing home. Again, I really want to thank Mr. Berlin for his leadership on this effort, as well as all of the administrators and faculty and staff that have been contributing to this. I ask for the public's patience. This is in unprecedented times. We've never done this before. We're doing the best we can. I think we have a reasonable and logical plan based upon science and guidance. If issues arise, we'll try to handle them the best we can. And then please be reminded that our plan is, once this overall plan is approved, then we'll have individual building plans that will be more specific to those grade levels, and then principals will hold meetings to answer some building-specific questions. So if there's no other comments or questions from the board at this time, I'd like to move on with the agenda. Any other questions or comments from the board? Well, thank you very much for this robust discussion, and again, thank you to all of the participants and citizens and parents and teachers and interested individuals that joined us this evening. We really want to to make this communication the best that we can, so everyone has an understanding of what the plan is. So thank you again, and thank you again, Mr. Berlin. Anything else for your superintendent's report tonight?
No, that's all Dr. Pushjack. Thanks.
That was quite a bit. Thank you very much, Mr. Berlin. We will move on now on our agenda for the business administrator's report. The chair recognizes Mrs. Vicky Bendig, the business administrator, for her report. Mrs. Bendig.
Thank you, Dr. Pushjack, for tonight. I just have two reports. General Fund Treasurers Report, Cash in the Bank as of June 30th, And then checks that have been written since the last board meeting on June 16th, totaling $189,772.57. The rest of the reports will be ready for next week's board meeting.
Any questions from the board for Mrs. Bendig regarding her business administrator's report? Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. Next week's agenda will have one item under legal advisement, and that's the sale of the parcel from repository for unsold property taxes. Mrs. Bendig, could you please remind the board and the audience what this is?
So this is once properties have been gone through all of the legal processes so that they are no longer, they're like, people are on back taxes, have not paid their taxes, the parcel's been basically repossessed. They go to the repository sale, so the property can be sold for $250, and what it actually does is it gets that property rehabilitated and back on the tax rolls once that sale takes place. So the new owner assumes responsibility for paying the taxes because they bought the property. That's what this is what is happening with this property.
Is there any questions or discussion about the item listed as LA1 on your agenda? Hearing none, that item will be on the agenda for the board's consideration next week. That will be the only item under legal advisement. The chair recognizes Mr. Marty Pushjack for finance. Mr. Pushjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll be looking to place four items at this time on the agenda for next week under finance, beginning with F1, approving the monthly budgetary transfer from the budget versus actual report as outlined.
Any questions regarding the budgetary transfer? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, F1 will be on the agenda for next week. Hearing none, F one will be on the agenda for next week.
F two, I will be looking to authorize the district to file an application for Plan Con reimbursement for the school construction project as outlined. It's my understanding that under the old financing that we had refinanced, there was some Plan Con benefit that, in order to transfer that to the new debt structure that we have now, there's some paperwork that has to happen. Again, as I understand, the district will be filing for that with Plan Con to, for the school construction project as outlined.
And your understanding is correct. Is there any further discussion on F two? Hearing none, that item will be on the agenda for your consideration next week.
F three, we'll be looking to approve the Berkheimer confidentiality resolution as outlined.
Any questions or discussion on the Berkheimer confidentiality resolution? Again, Mrs. Bendig, could you just remind the board and the audience what this item is?
Yes. So in order for the district to have access to online reports for Berkheimer, when they, when they collect our per capita tax, earned income tax and local services tax, they publish the report online. And in order to have access to that report, this confidentiality resolution has to be completed. It was completed with my name and the former accounting clerk, D R C Fronteras. So we're just, we're taking our names out of it and saying that the positions can have access to that so that Mrs. Huff, who was hired last month, has the ability to download the reports and be able to process our deposits as necessary.
Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. So F three is basically a process for a new employee in that position. Any further discussion on F three, the Berkheimer confidentiality resolution? Hearing none, that item will be added to the agenda next week for your consideration.
Then F four, we'll be asking the board to approve the M O U between Child Development Services and the district to provide services from July first, twenty twenty through June thirty, twenty twenty-three as outlined.
Any questions on the M O U for Child Development Services? Hearing none, that item will be on the agenda for next week.
And that's all I have under finance at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pushjack. The chair recognizes Mr. Josh Paris for Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Paris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looks like no items for next week.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. The chair recognizes Mr. Jeremy Blazer for Personnel. Mr. Blazer.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of items under Personnel versus P one for resignations. To approve resignations of Sharon Dannyak, a high school English teacher, and Emily Manino, WAM special education teacher.
Any discussion on the resignations as presented in P one?
It's, both were excellent teachers. Sad to see them go. Just want to say that.
Yeah, and I, Mill Creek continues to hire our people. So we've talked about this before. It's because they're great teachers and I think we, I think we really develop great teachers too, which is good and bad, obviously.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Hearing no further discussion, the P one resignations will be on the agenda for your consideration next week.
And then P two, to approve the following appointments. Shelby Chasco as the new school resource officer, effective August tenth. Ronald Rary as a piano teacher, repair technician, upcoming school year. And Mark Alloway as concert accompanist, vocal ensemble, graduation baccalaureate at a rate not to exceed. There are three open positions and my understanding is we're not ready to appoint anyway by next week's meeting. So if please, could we move those to the August agenda?
Okay, just a clarification, Mr. Blazer, only the final two, the elementary positions. My understanding is the administration is going to be able to have a name for the high school social studies teacher. So just the two elementary positions, the elementary teacher and the long-term sub, we will ask to remove from this agenda to add to the August agenda.
Understood.
So with that clarification, any further discussion on the appointments, P two? Again, we'll remove the last two from the agenda and put them on for August. And then hopefully we'll have a name for the social studies position. Hearing none, those appointments will be on the agenda for next week's consideration.
And then P three, tuition reimbursement, to approve the tuition reimbursements as outlined in the attachment.
Any questions or discussion on tuition reimbursements? Hearing none, P three tuition reimbursement will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
And P four, conference requests to approve the following conference requests as listed below.
Any questions or discussion regarding the conference requests as presented? Hearing none, P four conference requests will be on the agenda for next week.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Blazer. The chair recognizes Mrs. Amanda Farrell for policy. Mrs. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no items for next week's agenda.
And I thank you, Mrs. Farrell. The chair recognizes Mrs. Julie Pekovic for curriculum. Mrs. Pekovic.
I forgot, sorry. I was muted.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Try this again. I have six items under curriculum tonight to be moved to next week's agenda. C one, the district phase school reopening health and safety plan. C two, the pandemic instructional resolution. C three, affiliation agreement between those universities and Wasburg area school district. C four, the Title One Agreement for Services. C five, the preliminary third-party contractor agreement for Title One Services. And C six, the wit and wisdom pilot program.
Thank you, Mrs. Pekovic. Just to remind the board, C one is the plan that we discussed tonight. And then, Mr. Berlin, could you just please speak to C two, which is the pandemic instructional resolution? Could you remind the board and the participants what that is?
Sure. A bit of legal wrangling has gone on between the P A State Assembly and the Department of Education. When the omnibus school book, school code bill was passed in June thirtieth, along with the P A State budget, they inserted some language stating that schools must be in session for a hundred and eighty days. And it looked pretty obvious that the, the P A Assembly wanted to ensure that, yes, we're going back to school, the economy's going to reopen. A lot of superintendents, including myself, started contacting legislators and P D E. I actually sent an email to Kurt Sonny, who's the head of the Education Committee in the, in the Senate. And I told him, look, a hundred and eighty days, what if we go into a situation where we're in the red and we can't come to school? If, will, will those days count for the hundred and eighty day rule? And the answer that we got at the time was no. Well, that, that turned into the Department of Ed and legal experts going through Pennsylvania state code. And they determined that there's bits of code that allows school boards during an emergency to alter their instructional methods, days, hours of instruction, just like we're proposing here for, for the yellow and the red. So the bottom line is, is online teaching, if, if we declare it with this resolution that we're in an emergency and we need to alter and do a mixture of virtual hybrid learning next year, then we won't be penalized if we don't have a hundred and eighty physical days of school. There, there may be more to, on this to come, but that's just where the process is right now. So Knox Law Firm drafted this pandemic resolution so that, you know, we have the option to go virtual if we need to. And we, we know that we won't be penalized for not being physically present if, if we're prohibited.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Berlin. Any questions on the six items listed under curriculum? The district phase reopening plan, the pandemic instructional resolution, the affiliation agreement, Title One Agreement Services, third-party contractor services and wit and wisdom pilot program? Any questions or discussion from the board on those six items? Hearing none, they will be on the agenda for your consideration next week. Thank you, Mrs. Pekovic.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I recognize Mr. Josh Paris for technology. Mr. Paris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't see any items for next week.
Thank you, Mr. Paris, for pinch hitting for Mrs. Pound. Recognize Mr. Steve O'Donnell for transportation. Mr. O'Donnell.
Nothing to add other than what was discussed in today's meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Donnell. The chair recognizes Mr. Shawn Mattson for athletic and extracurricular. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four items tonight to be approved for next week's agenda for under athletic and extracurricular. A E one is the Wasburger School District's plan for re-socialization of the sports and is listed below. A E two, extracurricular resignation of Sharon for the English department is listed below. And A E three, extracurricular appointments to approve the appointment of Laura Vogel as the English department head now for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. And A E four, athletic appointments to approve the coaching appointments for the following twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year as listed below.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Just to remind the board and the audience that A E one was the focus of our June meeting. We had that plan approved and this is just an update. Each time there's an update to the plan, we will need to bring it to the board and the update for this one reflects the Secretary of Health mask requirement. So any question or discussions on the four items listed under athletic or extracurricular this evening?
I do, Andy. It's Julie.
Yes, Mrs. Pekovic.
Under the athletic appointments for coaching, it says Katrina Barnhart for fifth and sixth grade cross-country step one. I didn't think that we paid any coaches from K to six. So is that supposed to be a seventh and eighth grade position?
That is, that's the only paid position we have at the fifth and sixth grade level. I, I don't know its origin. It's, it's been there as, it was there in two thousand when I started working in the district. So that's, that's what I know about it, but it is a paid position.
I did not know that. Okay.
Any other questions on the four items under athletic and extracurricular? Hearing none, those four items will be on the agenda for your consideration for next week. And thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Thank you.
Nothing under miscellaneous for the agenda next week. Mr. O'Donnell, anything to report from Erie County Technical School?
Just that we had a brief meeting and they had a lot of back and forth about their schedule. And it's one of the reasons why I asked a question previously is they, the, the board and their administration was having trouble agreeing to what that schedule was, but they understood that their schedule was oftentimes dictated by other districts that are filter that program. So feed that program. There was a lot of discussion about that. And also, again, about the renovations and the fact that they were sort of delayed because of COVID. And there's a lot of fear that they're running out of time to get that project started before they would have to go and get another quote altogether. So again, that process is being delayed.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Donnell. Any questions for Mr. O'Donnell regarding the Erie County Tech School?
And I just might add, it's a shame. And I had voiced my concerns when they drew up this latest set of plans because we did this before over ten years ago and we paid for plans. And then Mill Creek would not commit to, to pay their portion. And it looks like we're right back in that same situation.
Yeah, one of their, one of their big concerns is they got a grant for safety, whatever that grant was called. And so they're getting a new vestibule put in that's being paid completely funded by that grant. But that stalled and so they have funds that, you know, they can't even open the school until they have that safety thing figured out. So it's a real ugly situation at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. A brief report for the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit. At our June meeting, we did hire a new executive director who will take over in October for the retiring executive director. The board unanimously approved the assistant executive director Bradley Whitman to assume the role of the executive director at the I U. And the board also has looked to not fill the assistant executive director position at this time due to not knowing budgetary situations for the future. So there is a new executive director hired effective in October, once the new, the current executive director retires. And that concludes my report from the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate. Any questions for the I U? Okay, thank you. That brings us to board correspondence and dialogue. Anything among the board this evening?
I just had one. There's been a lot of the conversations about athletics. Has there been any discussion about whether there would be theater arts at the high school in the fall or, or in the, in the spring? Has there been any talk about whether or not those programs would be allowed to run at all?
Yeah, answer is we don't know yet. You know, hopefully that scientific study will give us some direction. But, you know, singing is a super, super spreading event. And like I said, some reports are saying that you can, you can do it with masks if you really space people out and take frequent breaks, but you know, that's, that's just one study done, done in Germany.
And my prediction is someone's going to write a play or a musical about social distancing where they meet all the guidelines so schools and school districts are able to put on productions. You heard it here first. Anything else from the board? And once again, I want to thank Mr. Berlin and his leadership for leading the pandemic task force. And again, thank Mr. Mattson for his service on behalf of the board. And again, just to remind the public, let's be patient, let's be diligent, but let's look for communications from the district. I was so happy to see so many people join us this evening. We certainly appreciate that. And again, you know, we look forward to the best possible scenarios for our students not knowing what may or may not happen come fall. So thank you to everyone for all of their efforts from the administration to the teachers, to our support staff, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, custodians, secretaries and the like. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. The motion carries. Thank you for everyone who attended our meeting this evening and thank you to the board member and everyone have a great night. Our meeting is now adjourned.